Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn official regular meeting. Today is Monday, December 8th, 2025. It is 7:13. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Jamal Ojabee.
Here.
Ali K. Bazey.
Here.
Patrick D. Ambrosio here. Mary Petrovoff.
Here.
Nazar Sob.
Here.
Amar Zar not here. President Moser.
Here. Thank you. Next item.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Fani Lewis, Principal of Long School Elementary School, will introduce students that will lead the pledge allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Lewis is not here yet, so I'm going to introduce a student. We have four wonderful students from Long Elementary Schools. We have Riley, 5th grade. Riley, where are you? We have Reese, 4th grade. Logan, 1st grade. And Andy, 5th grade.
Here.
They're gonna lead us with a pledge, and then you're gonna walk to President Moser and get your... Start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
You got a comedian.
So we have Riley Sanson first. Riley's in the back.
Good job.
Logan.
That's my name, don't worry about it.
And Andy. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Next item, please.
Interim Superintendent's update. Agenda items.
Thank you. So happy to introduce Ms. Lamee Soror in the chair of the interim superintendent.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll start with retirements. We have eight retirements this month. Hassan Berry, 25 years of service. Rainita Brantley, 12 years of service. Kadara Eckridge, 25 years of service. Jennifer Hatfield, 28 and 1/2 years of service. Betty Lepo, 32 years of service. Elizabeth McGreevy, 18 and 2/3 years of service. Shane Shaki, 25 and 3/4 of a year, years of service. And Danielle Wagner, 41 and 3/4 years of service. Yes. Move on to non-agenda items. Okay. I wanted, I hope everyone had a restful Thanksgiving break. This is also our last meeting prior to winter break, so I'd like to wish everyone an upcoming Happy New Years. And for those who celebrate, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa. You're welcome. Last week was the start of snow day request emails from students, and all I have to say is we have very persuasive writers in Dearborn Public Schools, so we're doing something right. Mr. Tom Wall will update us on 31AA.
Good evening, President Moser.
Good evening.
Ms. Soror and members of the board. 31AA is a grant from the state of Michigan this year for mental health and safety. They did add a new caveat that you haven't done before in the history of the state that requires some additional legal restrictions if you accept this money. There has been a court case that has been proposed in two different courts to remove that legal clause. Right now, we have opted in. The board approved that at their college board meeting last month. So we have opted in, and we have until December 31st to opt out, depending on how the legal cases go. Both court cases are scheduled for December 19th, and I'm sure there'll be a press release right after that, and we'll probably discuss it at administrative level and inform the board of what those consequences are and determine if we want to continue down that path. That's the quick update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're telling us there might be a meeting during Christmas time, but just a second. I hope not. Next item.
Okay. Athletic celebrations. We'd like to continue with the spirit of celebrating our exceptional athletes like we did with the Atzal soccer team last month, so we're working on a systemic way to do that at every board meeting. And potential band. Mr. Muslin was gonna approach the podium and update us on that.
Good evening, board members. Interim Superintendent, Ms. Har. So again, as we've been updating the board, we are continuing the process. We're actually in our final phase, starting this week, of gathering some further community input. So as this week, a statistically accurate survey will be conducted by a third party, both, it will be a phone survey done in English and in Arabic, and it will go out to a wide cross-section of our community, again, to solicit, this will be the third part of the, of a process to solicit information and solicit some information from our community. So that will be going on. That information will be, just as all the other information has been shared with the board, we will share that with you before you leave for the break. And then in January, we'll be meeting with the board in small groups to kind of review all of that information, answer any questions that you may have, in hopes of then preparing for the board to hold perhaps some type of board study session late in February or late in January, early February, so that we can share all of this information with our community as we continue to move forward in a process that would help us develop some type of opportunity that we would be able to place on a ballot as a ballot initiative in November of 2026. So that's kind of where we are at right now. Yep?
Thank you, Mr. Muslin.
And Mr. Eddy has a short presentation regarding AI.
Ladies and gentlemen from the Board of Education, thank you for your time here today. I'll tell you a little bit about where we're going with AI. We've had a steering committee that's met fairly recently, and what we're looking at doing is developing a district-wide vision for where we plan on going with using AI tools, developing a policy and guidelines on the tools that are available. And so what we're looking at doing is, if I can actually just go back to this picture, this is where we kind of see the future of Dearborn Public Schools. Now, one thing I didn't put in this part of the presentation is when you look at this class with these students, it's AI general. So AI is already a pretty good tool right there for helping us make some of the visuals that we want to have, but moving forward with everything like that, that was a little surprising there, I had to throw in there. What we're looking at doing is using Aaron Baughman, who's a facilitator from Michigan Virtual, to help us come up with our vision, working with our technology advisory committee to get input on the mission, vision, and policy before we're able to bring that to the Board of Education. As we're looking at developing the policy and guidelines, we want to look at standardizing our artificial intelligence resource tools so that we're able to use items that are in a closed environment, so that we own the data, we control the data, and working with staff to know that we want to protect student personal identifiable information in all rules according to FERPA, SIPA, and COPA, so that we're compliant. Part of that is providing the professional development so that all staff know that it's not okay to put in personal identifiable information in there, and we want to kind of gear in that direction, and providing the professional development so that we know how to ethically use AI site resources and be able to kind of share our work. And AI is also instrumental in this right there. It helped me to create the graphic, even though the words are all my own in there. No copyright violation. Our next steps where we're going with the committee is to come up with those policies and guidelines, share that with the board, get board approval, and then, once everything is approved by the Board of Education, share that information with staff through newsletters and provide guidance, and also developing some resources that we're able to pilot in some of the classes as well, too, with tools that we'd want to use that are standardized. With our current cybersecurity required course, we want to update that so that it provides guidance for all staff on using the AI tools, how to stay safe from phishing emails, and provide technology use guidelines. And so that's where we're really looking at going over the next year with AI resources. That's all I have for the presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, you know, I'm always gonna have a question. Couple things. Today I saw on the news that President Trump is looking at making an executive order again because individual states are creating their own regulation and rules for AI. And President Trump felt that was too overburdenous for the AI vendors, so to speak, for them to have to get permission from 50 different states with 50 different rules, and he wanted one blanket generic regulation, I'm assuming, is what he's talking about. When we talk about it for a school system, do we have any way of ensuring and vetting the probably multitudinous vendors who will be out there hocking their wares, so to speak, and trying to get business so that whatever policies and safeguards we attempt to put into place aren't lost with state and federal regulation oversight or lack of oversight?
So what we want to be able to do is really look at the types of tools that are out there. We want to use tools that integrate with our current LMS. And so as we look at them, a lot of tools are kind of one-offs. It does this, it does that, and those are things that it's nice, but how do we get the biggest bang for our buck? And that's what we want to kind of look at. What integrates with our Google system? And so right now, as we're looking at this, we're evaluating those tools that integrate with Google, are able to be cross-curricular and be able to reach students at different levels like that, be part of a closed system so that we own the data, we control what's in there like that, and really have good development plans for the foreseeable future like that. Like, we know it's not just gonna be, you purchase this, this is all you get and everything like that. We want to see expansion with everything as well, too. What I was gonna also say is that other districts, like Kent County, has started an evaluation tool on AI resources. We're also actively looking at that as we look at our list of resources that we want to be able to use so that we can look at what works best with our students, our staff, and our system.
My bigger concern is, how are we gonna control? I mean, are we going to be utilizing known resources to begin with so that we have some kind of established relationship with them, to know that they are strictly looking out for the welfare of our students' educational environment, as opposed to just trying to get in there and, you know, find a larger audience to buy into? I just, I worry that there's not, if there's such confusion in the state and federal regulations, how are we as a district going to be able to provide the best guidance? I don't know if we're really sure what's out there and how, who's developing it.
What we want to look at with everything is how well it integrates with our current LMS. We want to look at the data privacy protections that they have in place. Kent County has really done a lot of the legwork with this, and we also want to kind of examine the cost with everything as well, too, because, like you were saying, we are the third-largest district in the state, and that's very attractive for AI vendors to say, hey, Dearborn Public Schools is using this tool. And so what we want to do is be very meticulous and slow with how we're moving forward with everything so that we evaluate what's out there, we look at how well it integrates with our system, data privacy controls like that, and really gives us the biggest bang for our buck. Is it able to go across platforms like that? What is their research and development? Where are they going in the next five years with what they're able to do? So that we know we're starting small with one or two things, and then we can look at expansion if that's the direction we decide to go. Again, we want to use standardized tools where it's consistent so we have equity across the district.
Trustee Bazey.
Are we, I have a few questions. Are we also looking at this, you know, AI changes very, very fast, you know, tools are coming up every day. Are we, are you guys looking at guidelines or potential policies to bring to us about what teachers can do if they say, hey, here's this great new AI tool, I want to use it? What's the process here? Are you guys considering what to do in that regard?
And that's the best part, where we have a technology advisory committee, and what the technology advisory committee does is really kind of evaluate what tools are out there. So as we're putting together our current policy and guidelines, the technology advisory committee will be making recommendations on the tools that we are looking at. But if new future tools come out there that really look like it's something worthwhile and exploring, members from the technology advisory committee, which represent each of the different buildings, can bring that to the committee, and we can take a look at it and possibly pilot. If it's something that we kind of see, again, being worthwhile, protecting student data, going cross-curricular, and if it's something that is able to give our students a leverage, we definitely want to explore that as an option.
Do we have guidance as it relates to when these tools are introduced to students? Again, we got tools from chatbots that can talk about anything, to, you know, agents that can help you program, to things that can help you develop, image creation, you know, when are those tools, when is, what guidance is being put together to when those tools are introduced to students?
At grade level, you're saying?
Yeah.
At what grade level?
So that's a great two-part question right there. What we've started to do this year is to establish technology use guidelines that help to guide teachers with when technology would be appropriate. So we use the SAMR model to look at when paper and pencil would be appropriate, when technology adoption would be appropriate for certain items as well, too. With AI, we're looking at both of those factors as well as developmentally, like using chatbots with kindergartners would probably not be appropriate, so that's something that we want to hold off on. With the current guidelines that we're establishing with PAC directions, what we're looking at is sharing that direction with teachers like that and administrators so that they're able to see a little bit about, yeah, this looks like this would be appropriate here, we would use this resource, when paper and pencil, you know, are, you know, not able to be as leveraged as much as the technology like that, so. And that information we will share with the board as those guidelines become available for review.
Trustee Al Jami.
So when we started talking about AI, there is, you know, a lot of concerns about using AI and kids utilizing AI to do the work. So when I heard you say selecting AI that could integrate with the LMS, I'm still trying to figure out how the kid would utilize AI. And you mentioned you're gonna have to figure out paper versus AI and things like that. So are we selecting a tool before we figure out how the kids are gonna use it? I just want to make sure we do things in the order that, that's needed, because I use AI all the time and I love it. But also, in my age, I've used paper. You know, we're, the newer generations, you know, they're becoming too accustomed to it, to where it's thinking for them versus them doing the work. So I would think that the decision would be made on how AI will be used than selecting the AI that's needed.
So that's what we're looking at with the guidelines that we were establishing with the steering committee that we recently had. Part of that was putting together a matrix of what we're kind of looking for at what levels with everything, and then how it would be used. So some of the ideas that students would be able to use AI responsibly and ethically would be to brainstorm ideas for a project, taking their writing and looking for feedback, how they're able to get that information and correct any writing that they've done like that. Also being able to generate an image to go with their story, as long as they are properly citing that the image that they generated was used from AI as well, too. So working and refining with those guidelines right there, like Gemini is a tool that we are able to use that meets that criteria. It integrates with Google, it can provide the feedback for students, it can generate ideas and images as well, too. So that's a tool that we currently have in our suite. It's a closed system, so we own the data. Looking at others that would be like that is where we want to kind of move next, so that we're starting slow and then moving along.
So the final question for me, and it goes to Ms. Soror and the other executives, is so when we choose an AI, we're gonna have a decision on how it's gonna be used. We're not gonna just select AI and how it integrates and the features. We want to make sure it's, there's guidelines on how it's gonna be utilized, because one of the issues that some parents have is us relying too much on technology. Even though, you know, I work in technology, I think at a certain age, you don't want to rely on technology to the point of it's doing the work for you. So it's really, really important to make sure that we know how it's gonna be used, and then we determine the tool that we're gonna choose for that purpose. Okay?
Definitely.
Trustee Bazey.
I just want to kind of go along with what Trustee Al Jami is saying there. You know, I think that we live in a time right now where, as adults, we've, you know, straddled, you know, no to minimal technology to now this amazing tool, right? But a lot of times you can see what it generates, you can say, well, that ain't quite right, or that's not true. We have that background and skill. As a younger person that's still trying to learn that, that's one concern that's there that I hear from parents, and I have myself, you need to keep those critical thinking skills, we need to, we need to make sure that they understand this is used as a tool, not your answer. And so just making sure that when we do introduce those things that are approved, right? We have some of that, and we have some of that oversight, you know, is, do these tools have oversight so we can see how they're being utilized, you know, within our framework?
That's a great point right there. So really, part of our professional development that going forward is really teaching our staff and administrators how to utilize the tools, how to responsibly use everything, to look at everything critically, like when you look at information that might be hallucinated as output right there, making sure that students are able to recognize that and not use that information as part of any reports that they're doing or anything like that, as well as part of our digital citizenship curriculum that's taught K through 12 like that. Part of that would be to show students the responsible use, and that would come from our technology guidelines that we have, showing the ethics right there, and then working with them through responsible means right there to know when it's good to use for brainstorming, correcting information, and extending it as well.
We, I know we all received some letters written by Fortson class of students talking about, it was an exercise in their class to write to us, talking about their relationship with AI, or their understanding of its benefits or its weaknesses. So the conversation's already being had at the high school level, at the very least, of responsibility and not becoming a lazy student, so to speak, of just allowing something else to do all the work. My only concern is, is that I think it will be a real challenge for all of us in order to have great oversight, because once we let that cat out of the bag kind of thing, I'm not certain that, especially a district of this size, that we will be able to control all of those nuances of use, once it's accessible to the students who, as Trustee Bazey said, are not yet developed to be critical thinkers, and we don't want to lose that ability in these students to generate their own minds moving forward. So I hope that we do move slowly, to some extent, and carefully, and with great thought.
I do think, too, as, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I do think, too, as, as this technology changes day by day, you know, having the ability to, you know, some of these tools will just roll out and say, here's this new feature that's available, here's this new thing that it can do, it's so much faster, it's even easier now to do X, Y, Z, having the ability to dictate what gets rolled out and how it gets rolled out and made available. I mean, again, we want to be cautious as we go, it's a very fast-moving train, but we need to make sure that we keep, you know, that our priorities in place.
Definitely, and that's why one of the major things we want to see is how well it integrates with our Google suite, because with our Google suite, we can control which features can get toggled on and off like that. So if there's something that we see that's alarming, concerning like that, we're able to remove that with certain types of updates that are in there.
I understand that Policy Committee has discussed this today and is gonna be doing more of discussions on developing a board policy and also guidelines as well for the administration and the rest of the staff. Thank you, Mr. Eddy.
Thank you. I appreciate it, everyone.
I have one more thing.
Any other updates? Go ahead.
Just to add on to what Mr. Eddy and his steering committee have done, I think they've taken into account the level of expertise our teachers have and have developed a system of guidelines that is accessible for all teachers with safety protocols and that AI and any tool should never replace the teacher, but is also just to enhance the learning process and the privacy measures. So the starting point is great. The last thing I had was that I wanted to thank the board for your support during this interim. I'm thanking you in advance for the next few months, so you can't take it back. I also want to acknowledge the team Dr. Maleko thoughtfully built, who continue to support and lead from where they each stand and have made this transition as seamless as possible. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Soror. Any questions for the superintendent? No questions? Making it easier for you.
That was, yeah, it's the first time, right?
Yeah. We're gonna let you slide.
That's right. That's right. I'm gonna play the rookie card for a few months.
All right. Next item.
Recommendations and acknowledgements. Commandations.
Good evening, everybody. Commendation to Chris Kennerberg, Supervisor of Network Services and Applications, for his ongoing positivity and solution-oriented mindset. Chris is a what-if-we-can person. One example is his work on our district's student success check-in. By using our technology to seamlessly make it available to students and staff, Chris was able to save the district money and time and improved ease of use. Commendation to Salina Principals Iman Ali and Sue Stanley, and teachers Emily Wager, Christina Rendazzo, Hanan Hussein, and Emira Saidi for hosting and sharing experiences with the Southeast Michigan Stewardship Coalition while on their traveling dialogue trip to the campus. During the short visit, the education students learned how the Salina teachers are using classroom lessons and school activities to teach students about climate change and how they can help be a part of creating a healthier environment for all.
Commendations to several Dearborn High fall sports for their success last season. The boys tennis team won the KLA East Division Championship, and boys tennis coach James Carter was named MHSAA Regional Coach of the Year. In girls golf, junior Kalissa Post represented Dearborn High at the MHSAA Division One State Finals, tying for 16th place and earning all state honorable mention honors. In boys cross-country, junior Rami Bazey competed at the Division One MHSAA State Championships, finishing 141st with an impressive competed at the Division One MHSAA State Championships, finishing 141st with an impressive 3.5 mile time of 16 minutes 30 seconds. In girls swimming, junior Annette Jakubovic achieved 18th place in the 100-meter backstroke at the Division One MHSAA State Championship. Commendations to Dearborn High's three ELD teachers, Rolah Sobh, Malak Vardho, and Ula Azur. The trio hosted a United by Food Connected by Culture luncheon on November 24 to honor and celebrate their 100 newcomer students and the English language learner teachers at Dearborn High. As part of the celebration, students wrote heartfelt thank you cards to their teachers and friends to express their gratitude and appreciation.
Any other commendations for middle school and elementary? You didn't introduce yourselves when you came in, so please.
My name's Zainab Ahmed.
At school?
Edsel.
My name is Callum Carscadden. I'm a senior at Edsel.
And usually we ask the seniors, what are you planning on doing after high school? So, any plans?
I'm planning on going into business.
I'm planning on going into sports broadcasting.
Amazing. You'll make a great one in that one. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Next item, please.
Employee recognition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce Casey Zimmerman. Casey is a school social worker now in elementary schools. She's been with Dearborn Schools for four years, and she was nominated for transforming school culture with her positive guidance and expertise and her constant willingness to help. And when we surprised Casey right away, her warmth was, she just gives off warmth. And both her principal, Dr. Tynan, and Micah Saley, executive director, were just both saying she's praising, giving her a ton of praise, sorry, and expressed much gratitude for Casey being on our staff. Want to just say?
Hi, I'm Casey. Just thank you. Thank you to Nellin, the students, the staff, and the students' families as well, and all of Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We surprised her. We said we're from HR. Right away, she was concerned. So it was a nice, nice surprise. We'd also like to recognize non-instructional employee Peter Clor. Peter Clor is a custodian at Fortson High School, and he's been with Dearborn Schools for nine years. He was nominated for being the best. His service to Fortson High School ensures the building is ready to serve students each and every day. We surprised him the day right when Thanksgiving break was beginning, and he was at Fortson working, and Fortson had dismissed. So he was very surprised. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to join us today, but we are very thankful for Peter. Also, for the administrator of the month, Miriam Aloia. Miriam is not able to be here today, and she is a special ed coordinator. She serves the entire district, including the supervision of early childhood special ed programs and elementary autism programs as well. She's been with Dearborn Schools for eight years. I cannot believe she's only been with us for eight years. It feels like she's been here forever, and we are absolutely blessed to have Miriam as one of our leaders in the district. She is nominated for leading with exceptional skill and compassion. Her dedication to supporting our students with the most significant needs sets a high standard for all. And if you know Miriam, you know that she's always got a smile on her face and presents herself with the utmost compassion in all her interactions. So we're thankful for Miriam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. Next item, please.
Acknowledgements of donations.
Donate. A donation of $50,000 has been offered to Dearborn Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with PNC to be used for Salina Green Schoolyards. A donation of $50,000 has been offered to Dearborn Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with Cleveland Cliffs to be used for Salina Green Schoolyards. A donation of $2,627.30 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation through crowdfunding to be used for kitchen upgrades. A donation of $1,410 has been offered to adult education by the Dearborn Education Foundation through crowdfunding to be used for citizenship classes. A donation of $500 has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for banding wheels, banding wheels for ceramics. A donation of $950 has been offered to McCullough Unis School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a music class piano lab. A donation of $700 has been offered to River Oaks Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for art and design club, sorry, 3D, oh, and 3D printing. A donation of $1,377 has been offered to Dearborn High School by Data Image to cover the installation and leveling of two 75-inch televisions that will be used to scroll important information for students, parents, and staff all day long. A donation of 15 boxes that included a turkey, mashed potatoes, vegetables, and vegetables has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Eternal Light to be given to families in need. A donation of $250 has been offered to Dearborn High School by Discover Islamic Club DHS to be used for the newcomers Thanksgiving event, which was just part of commendations as well. A donation of $300 has been offered to Dearborn High School by Mr. Imad Decca and his anonymous donors to be used for the newcomers Thanksgiving event. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the donors, as well as the foundation for their support to our schools. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Board training, November 3, 2025. Board report 2567. Finance committee meeting, November 10, 2025. Board report 25-68. Regular P-12 meeting, November 10, 2025. Board report 2569. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved? Moved by trustee Petliszkoff.
Support.
Supported by trustee Sob. Any corrections to the minutes mentioned? Seeing none, may I attach a unanimous roll to this motion? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item?
Union leadership commentary. This section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between the district and administration. And all bargaining units, both instructional and non-instructional union members, serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decisions-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions, as well as a group meeting with union president. These meetings are not required but are an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestion, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. Association of Dearborn Schools Administration, none. Dearborn Federation of School Employees, none. Dearborn Federation of Teachers, Ms. Kathy Martin.
Good evening. Due to a series of unfortunate events over the past several days, I need to use my computer to address you all. Welcome. Congratulations, Ms. Soror. Glad to have you. Good evening to all of you. There are really two things I wanted to address tonight, and they go hand in hand. One is the changing landscape of education and then also how it's impacting our teachers. I've had this conversation with several people here in this room, and I've also had to check myself. I've been out of the classroom for almost three years now. And I feel like anyone who has not been face-to-face with students over the past four or five years has no idea what it's like in those classrooms and in those buildings, including principals, because principals, they have the closest look, but they're dealing with it on a broader level. And I feel like you, as school board trustees, need to also understand how education has changed. It's not the same school you all were in. It's not the same school some of your kids were in. You still have kids here, but it's still, it's very different. And the reason I feel compelled to talk about this is because if I don't say it, I don't know how clear it's going to become to people. So if you don't work directly with students, I really encourage everyone not to spend a couple hours, not to spend several days in a classroom. I know there are districts out there where, you know, administrators and district-level employees do two, three days a month in a classroom. So I really would like to see the district move in that direction, because that's going to create much more understanding for our staff and for what they're dealing with. In classrooms, the teachers have absorbed all kinds of expectations, differentiating instruction, which didn't exist, you know, when I was in school, to be honest with you. It's a great thing, and I'm not saying anything negative about it. We need it. It's necessary. But not everyone has, was taught some of these skills, differentiating instruction, tracking data, implementing new initiatives, some of which come and go with little notice. It's getting better, though, I will say that. Providing social, emotional support, communicating constantly with families, and managing increasingly complex needs. The demands have multiplied, but the time and the support has not, not at the same rate. I understand we have added more social workers. We have added some things, some extra supports, but it's not increased at the rate that the demands of our students have increased. And at the same time, our kids are changing. They're brilliant. They're resilient. They're curious. And they also come to school with all kinds of emotional and academic challenges. There's anxiety. There's isolation. There's learning gaps, trauma. There's instability. We saw it get worse during the pandemic, and honestly, it hasn't disappeared. I personally think it's increased. Our students need strong relationships. They need consistent support, and they need time to grow. And I'm saying this, I understand this isn't just a Dearborn issue. This is a national issue. This is a state issue. And I'm not okay with the fact that because it's a national issue, that we're going to be okay with it. I've said this millions of times. Dearborn likes to be the frontrunner in things. Let's pick stuff like this to really get ahead on. Just because these kids are coming to us this way doesn't mean we have to just accept it. So when you all don't know exactly what's happening on the ground, it's easy to misinterpret situations. So right now, we are seeing, personally, I'm seeing, in Dearborn, increasingly, like, increased amounts of like reprimands for teachers, for things that do not negatively impact students. Examples are things that could have been a quick conversation are ending up in HR. Putting in an absence incorrectly is not being just communicated one-on-one. And things like this are very demoralizing to our staff, because they're there trying to serve our students, and now they're being reprimanded for things not regarding their job, but a mistake that could have been an honest mistake that they made. Again, I understand education's under attack at a national level, but we can decide to address these obstacles with understanding, collaboration, and compassion. It's disheartening to look at the weekly management report and see that we're losing teachers to resignations and retirements, when I know very well that these resignations would not have happened, and these retired, people were not planning on retiring this early necessarily. They were planning on working longer. They just couldn't do it anymore. This last management report, I was so excited, because we have a department that's been understaffed, and they just hired someone for this department, and then on the management report, I see someone from this department just quit. So it was understaffed. They hired someone to help. Someone quit. Guess what? We're still understaffed. People are struggling, and we're going to keep losing people, because they're not being treated with the respect that they need. I know I'm all over the place. I hope you guys are following me, but it's really frustrating when I'm getting phone calls from people who want to stay in the district. They love the students. They love their job, but it's become emotionally and physically impossible for them to stay. And there are things that we can do as a district, like compassion and understanding, like having simple conversations that could alleviate some of that. We, we're paying well. It's not the money anymore. I'm going to be honest with you. The money is bringing people in. We're paying well. It's those intangibles that, that people are struggling with. And you know, in order to get the best out of people, you need to treat them with respect and compassion, and that's free. We don't have to pay them. We can support them without vilifying them. We can correct errors without making educators feel like criminals, and we can help them grow without nitpicking and belittling. Moving forward, I really hope that people choose wisely to evaluate the voices of the people that you know, that know the classrooms the best, to make decisions grounded in learning and humanity, and to treat educators like people, and remember that the system can't function without them. We see what's happening with the shortage, and it doesn't have to be that. Our community is strong. Our schools are filled with talented, caring professionals. Our students are extraordinary, but we can't do more with less forever, and we must do better with what we have. Please, we need to invest where it matters, and it's the people who are face-to-face with our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We truly appreciate your address to us. I can tell you that this more than I can speak for everybody emphasizes respect among everybody from the top down, that we model that respect to our students. So if any actions that you see is outside of that, please let us know. As always, we always have an open-door policy and two-way communication about when things arise. And there are instances, unfortunately, where we're humans, where people tend to get out of their character, and, but that should be addressed, and that should be in a place where mutual respect is the norm. So I'll keep it at that. But we will have our conversations moving forward, and again, respect is one of our core values that we need to model to, to our students.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Dearborn Schools Operating Engineers Association, none.
We can go to special reports?
Special reports. P-12 audit report by Mr. Jeff Higgins, Plant Moran.
Good evening again. As part of one of our requirements for public school district, we're required to have an annual audit every year at the end of our fiscal year, June 30. Those audit reports get sent out to the federal agencies and the state, and I'm pleased to announce that Jeff Higgins, our auditor for Plant Moran, is going to give you an update. There's no action required. It just has to be received by the board.
Thank you and good evening, board members and superintendent. As Tom mentioned, my name is Jeff Higgins. I'm with Plant Moran. I'm the district's, represent Plant Moran. I'm the partner in charge of the overall audit for the district's financial statements for its year ended June 30, 2025. There's two documents that you have this evening that come out of our audit process. There's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audited financial statements. There's a separate report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. The financial statements do include both the P-12 school district, Henry Ford College, and also the Henry Ford College Foundation, because they're all one combined entity. But our presentation tonight is really just going to focus on the P-12 school district. On this first slide here, as the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on the audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. I'm pleased to report here tonight that based on the results of our audit procedures, we've rendered what's referred to as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This would be the highest level of assurance that auditors can provide in a set of financial statements. So again, an overall clean opinion. Touching upon just a few of the financial highlights for the year, and again, we're going to focus on the general fund, because the general fund is the primary operating fund for the district. This is the district's balance sheet as of June 30, 2025 and 2024. You can see at June 30, 2025, total assets were approximately $92.5 million. It's primarily comprised of caches of about $28.3 million, and then receivables of about $55.7 million. And then included within those receivables of $55.7 million, that's primarily made up of $46.2 million of July and August state aid payments. So again, the district is significantly funded through the annual foundation allowance paid by the state of Michigan. Those payments are paid in 11 installments to school districts, the first of which you get in October, and those continue through the following August. So it's just important to keep in mind that the district- So it's just important to keep in mind that the district actually receives 18% of its state aid after the close of the district's fiscal year-end, just to create some cash management juggling and challenges for local school districts. On the liability side of the ledger, you can see total liabilities are about $59 million, and that's primarily comprised of payroll-related liabilities of about $30 million, and then interfund amounts due to other funds within the district. The difference between your assets of $92 million and your liabilities of about $58.9 million would be your fund balance. The fund balance at June 30th, 2025 is about $33.5 million. It's about 2.1% increase from last year. This next slide, the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, it's effectively the income statement for the general fund. You can see total revenue for the year was just around $277 million. The largest component of that is state funding, that makes about 75% of your revenues, and the primary source of that would be state aid payments and other state-level categoricals. Then there's local funding of about 18%, that's about $47 million, that's primarily made up of property tax revenue. And then finally, interdistrict revenue is about $18 million, and the largest portion of that would be the county enhancement funds, which are received by the district. On the expenditure side, you can see total expenditures for the year were about $270 million, and these expenditures are then further broken down by the primary functional areas of the expenditure. You can see instructional expenditures are the largest expenditure of the school district at about $167 million there, making about 62% of the total district expenditures, and those would really just represent direct classroom and classroom-related activities. You can see support services are about 37%, and other about 1%. Just as a point of context, for the year ended June 30th, 2023, 2024, which is the last period from which full-year information is available, for districts with students between 10 and 20,000, so that group that Dearborn would fall into, the average instructional expenditures were about 60%. Like I said, Dearborn's at about 62%. So in terms of instructional expenditures, you know, dollars being spent in the classroom, Dearborn would be a little bit ahead of its peer districts. The last slide looks at the general fund balance. This really brings those last two slides together. Like I said, fund balance effectively is the assets minus the liabilities of the general fund, and the annual difference between revenue and expenditures adds to or subtracts from that fund balance. As we just saw on the last slide, the P-12 district had an increase in fund balance for the year ended June 30th of about $695,000. Fund balance is an important metric because it represents essentially the financial reserves of the district. It allows districts to deal with unplanned expenses and insulates the district from unexpected revenue losses and funding instability that we might have within the state. Fund balance is often then assessed as a percentage of your expenditures, just a way to measure how much fund balance do you have and within the size of the overall operations of the district. But for example, if you take your fund balance of about $33.5 million, divided by your expenditures about $270.5 million, that gives you that 12.37% as of June 30th, 2025. So we, on this slide, have a couple different data points to compare that to. That red line will represent the state average as of the end of the year, and again, the last year for which complete data was available is June 30th, 2024. The state average at June 30th, 2024 was just under 25%. And then as a goal, the Michigan School Business officials would recommend fund balance percentages of about 15%. So you can see in 2021, you're right at that state average level. Last few years, you've declined below that state average, and at the moment, you're right below the MSBO recommended level. But one important point of context, as you do review this chart, is it's important to keep in mind that since 2021, so since this data is presented on this chart here, the general fund has transferred approximately $47 million into the Building and Site Projects Fund. So essentially, the general fund is funding the district's capital improvement and capital needs. So again, that $47 million has gone to capital needs of the district. If the general fund did not have to bear the burden of those general fund, of those capital improvement funds, your fund balance would be right above the actual state average level. So again, just as a point of context, as you're reviewing this slide, there's different factors that impact state fund balance. The capital improvement needs of the district have really impacted state, the fund balance level here at the district for the last few years. That's a quick summary of the financial results for the year ended June 30th, 2025. I'd be happy to address any questions anybody on the board might have tonight.
Questions for Mr. Higgins, trustee Petlishkov.
Just real quick, where the state average ended in 2024, did that still include any leftover unspent COVID funds or any of the, to make it that great a difference? I mean, most districts that I know of in the past have never held 25% of a fund balance in reserve.
Yeah, certainly, the state average did increase significantly. If you go back to pre-COVID times, the state average was usually in the upper teens. With COVID, there were significant dollars injected into the educational system, and so a lot of districts did experience pretty significant increases in their fund balance as a result of that. Now that COVID funding has essentially all been exhausted, you know, districts were required to have expended it all last year, I would expect those state averages to start to decline, because yes, these last five years is certainly above the traditional norms of where districts would be.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood that this is not generally how it looks.
That is correct.
And so we aren't doing something wrong as much as it was the times we were in financially that makes it look different.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Aljamie.
So just to follow on the fund balance, it is low, and I understand there's times when S R funds made the fund balance higher, but you should always have, you know, based on the guidelines. We need to be aware, we're above the guidelines. But that's not my question. I know you did the audit for the operating budget, and I asked the same question before when we met, on the special revenue funds. What do we do when we look at it? Do we audit it? Do we make sure that, and for those that don't know what the special revenue fund is, it's really the grants and everything else, it's approximately $160 million. Do we look at that, and how come we don't see it as a part of the audit, to show us how things are going?
So you are correct. So there are multiple funds that are maintained by the district, and the funds, special revenue funds, there are separate special revenue funds established to account for resources that are used for specific purposes. There's a, you know, the food service special revenue fund, for example. There is the funded project fund, which is where all the federal programs are then accounted for also, and those are recorded in that fund. So we do audit all the funds of the districts, so all those are incorporated as part of the audit from both a financial statement perspective and their respect to federal programs. There is actually then a separate federal program audit that is also conducted, but the federal programs that are administered by the district are subject to an audit in accordance with, you know, O M B rules effectively. And so that audit is now in the process of being finalized. We weren't able to finalize that audit because we can't finalize it till the Office of Management and Budget had issued their compliance supplement. That's sort of the rules that the federal government puts out for districts to manage the fund. So they, it was delayed this year, as there's been lots of, to say, uncertainty and upheaval in Washington, so that compliance supplement was delayed this year in getting issued. It was issued on November 25th, so now districts have 30 days to get that federal program audit submitted. So we're in the process now of finalizing that, but the results of our federal program audit for the district also would have unqualified opinions, so clean opinions on those audit programs that are administered. The reason we like to talk about the general fund here is because, again, that is the primary operating fund of the district, that's where the majority of the funds are expended. And if you think of federal programs, you really can't add fund balance, they're basically reimbursement-type grants, so you can't recognize the revenue until you've incurred the expenditures. And so it is sort of in and out. So it's not necessarily district funds that the districts can manage to maintain long-term financial stability. All that really comes through the general fund, is why we would focus on the general fund for our presentation.
Yeah, and my understanding of an audit is to make sure that any funds, and maybe there's a separate audit, like you said, is utilized the right way. So when we talk about $160 million versus $277 or $280, like I just, like, so are you saying, Jeff, that you guys don't do that, or somebody else does it?
No, we do that audit also. So absolutely, all those funds, all those programs are audited as part of our audit. So if you go through the full financial report, so there's our incorporated in our financial statement audit, and those are part of our audit opinion, so those are absolutely part of our audit process, they're reviewed, we do opine on those. And again, all those separate funds, you know, the sort of the nitty-gritty of auditing, so there are separate audit opinions for the different funds also. There's the what are called major funds, non-major funds, and I get into too much details, but again, all of those funds, we have unqualified opinion, and those are part of our audit, they are part of our audit procedures. We do look at the underlying supporting records, documentation, all the required audit steps are conducted on those funds also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Higgins? Thank you, and congratulations to the administration on a clean, unmodified opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I should thank Tom Wall, Sonia Dixit, and the entire business office staff, as we just got into a little bit. The audit is a very rigorous, thorough process, and we do appreciate their cooperation, their preparedness, and helping us get through the audit.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
M A S B Annual Leadership Conference, President Moszib and trustee Bazey.
Yes, I'm not sure if we want to get up there. I guess we do have some slides to show. Visit to Traverse City was really nice during the fall. You see all of the colors driving up there. And this year, for the M A S B Annual Leadership Conference, I had the pleasure of representing the district along with trustee Bazey, as well as trustee Petlishkov, where we, I and trustee Bazey attended, at least I attended Saturday and also Sunday, and the delegate assembly on Thursday, and we were able to network with a lot of trustees from all over the state, and their theme this year was beyond the horizon. So briefly, and you have this in the presentation, but just to show what M A S B does, and something that they present is definitely the CBAs, the courses that they teach, those are three-hour courses, except for like one-on-one, which might be a full day of training. Those are very essential for us board members, so I encourage everybody to register, just get in touch with Joanne, and so get you registered for the class. If you take all of the 100s from 101 to 109, then you become Level 1 certified, and then there are different levels for Level 2, 3, and 4. For context, I believe I am at Level 3 right now. So those are the things that they do, and by the way, we do also get reimbursed from the state, at least $100 per course. I don't know what's the maximum amount, but we do have some kind of reimbursement that we do get for taking those classes. So on Thursday, and feel free to jump in whenever you were at the delegate assembly, usually this is where all of the school board members get in the ballroom, and they debate and talk about resolutions that M A S B will stand by and try to advocate and lobby legislatures based on those resolutions. And there were a lot of resolutions that were already pre-prepared by their committees and were presented. There were some floor resolutions, too, but they didn't make it to be voted on. So they did vote on a lot of issues, education issues, again, that influence advocacy, governance, and policy direction across the state, so. Anything to add on delegate assembly?
We have to, you have to have assigned delegates.
Yes, and we were, we were the assigned delegates for that one. This was kind of the agenda for the delegate assembly, where they started first with reports, those similar to the reports that I showed, then they went to the legislative update, which I do have a slide on, and then they went into the resolutions that they debated and then voted on. So on Saturday, one of the kind of the main session was from Matt Lehrman, Social Prosperity Partners, and he talked about leaders such as school board members, city council, as far as local government. And we think that national politics is difficult, but he did say that, you know, even on the local level, it is very, very complex. And usually, residents sometimes engage when there is a hot topic, when there is opposition to something, and they want to resist something that is coming through. And he even mentioned about organized efforts to weaken local governments or school boards by undermining them and their authority, and that brings disrupting of the growth when there is deficiencies. And then he mentioned that leaders face a dual challenge, for example, engaging that skeptic audience, as well as building a culture of trust when there was a mistrust. So recommended some of those notes that I took down was to make participation the norm, that we treat civic engagement as a core infrastructure, and this is, I feel, very, very important for our upcoming bond proposal, is how do we present it and also gain feedback and create that ongoing engagement with the residents where they feel the trust is there, and ensuring that that engagement is continuous even after the bond campaign. Again, we shift from just reaching out to a two-way dialogue. We are reframing the public meetings from battlegrounds to being collaborative exchanges. We facilitate horizontal discussions among neighbors, and we also use small groups, which we have been doing with our bond activity, but we should be also doing that with other things as well. Last thing he said, which was very impactful, is you need to restore that kind of sense of shared purpose. You go back to the basics, and then you govern from a sense of this is all of us together as a collective effort. For the legislative update, Jennifer Lawrence, I believe, and her assistant were very, very helpful in addressing all of the issues that are coming through and telling us where M A S B stands as far as these issues. She did mention 4922, which eliminated the requirement that a school librarian needs to be certified. Now you have people opposing this, and some people for it, but because of the shortage of school librarians, this was helpful in having school librarians who would serve in that capacity. They also said there is a harmful bill that might be coming through this year of making school boards our racist partisan, and that is totally not liked by M A S B, and they're advocating against it, which is a good thing. I don't think that is, that is good for anyone, to keep, bring in more politics into school boards.
There's also a concern with this particular one, you know, from the audience, as we were discussing it. There are people that are in particular jobs that typically do serve on a board, so if they're in the armed services and such, there's rules against them being political, and this would disqualify them from participating in a school board. And there's quite a few people that raised their hand and were mentioning different positions where, you know, this becomes a problem. So I think, you know, there was a lot of talk around that, and a lot of concern.
They also said some bills that unfortunately will decrease the school aid fund, which is 4375 and 4376, and those would exempt trade-in value for personal electronics from is 4375 and 4376, and those would exempt trade-in value for personal electronics from sales tax. So the state would not be able to collect that, the sales tax. So that's kind of around $9 million, because it includes more things than, than electronics. They also, one good thing that the House did was eliminating the acceptance of forms. After you take office, you have to submit that form within 10 days. They're saying they have eliminated that. I'm not sure if the Senate has passed that, though, to make it a law, and it was signed into law, so I'll have to look back and to see where it fell. And then they also, yeah, it's actually the last two bullet points is the same of removing that requirement. Two courses that I took, which were very, very beneficial, was one, Building Board Effectiveness, and it was 248, and spanned three hours on a Saturday, and it focused on how boards work together the best. How do you make sure that you understand group dynamics, and you identify styles of each board member, and how do you use this awareness to build teamwork, communication, and, you know, you play teamwork? And then the other course that I took was ethical challenge, and this also brought in a lot of examples of boards and governments being thrown into ethical challenges or ethical dilemmas. And the takeaway for this is, when they mentioned it, you know, in the beginning, do you have a code of conduct for your board? And that's something that I believe we do lack. Maybe we need to look into adopting one in the future.
I was able to take the CBA 101 class, Fundamentals in School Board Service. That was a full day. I think it's their longest 100-level class. We were able to touch on a lot of different subjects, which I think was great. Was able to be in a room with 15, you know, other school board members that were new, some taking as kind of a refresher, have been on the board for a while, and kind of going through some of this. Lot of questions, a lot of answers were brief, and there's a course on that. So there's not, or eight other 100-level courses that kind of dive into a lot more of those, those points. One thing that really was emphasized was the team of eight, you know, as seven elected, and the superintendent working together, and emphasizing, you know, how important it is for the team to work together. And then CBA 102, which is a three-hour class, Governing Through Policy, that one was interesting. We did a lot of breakout sessions where the sessions that were chosen were, or the topics that were chosen were AI and cellphone policy. And so you would sit with another board member from another school district, and what do you have, what do we have? Do we have something? How did you guys come to it? And then kind of just talking through what those policies are, developing policies, you know, checks and balances, some of that. So that, that was, that was aligning. You know, you had some school districts that would have policies that were completely written completely different, and some that use the same service and verbatim, you know. There were some informational sessions that I also attended. One was the importance of onboarding, you know, preparing newly-elected trustees to take their seats, and I thought that might be fitting. It was, it was an interesting session. It was, oh, I forget the school board that was, I think it's Clarkston that came in. Actually, their whole school board came to support the presenter, there was a former board member, and they kind of talked about, you know, how important it is to, when new school member, new school board members come on board, working together as a team. They had talked about, you know, their particular one, when, when the election was going on, it got a bit contentious, and people worried about the dynamics. But really, as with many things, breaking down those barriers is just through conversation, you know? You know, one-on-one, getting together for lunch, things like that, working together. I attended two sessions about AI by Michigan Virtual that put those together. They, they were showcasing a tool called School AI, and just kind of addressing some of the things that we've talked about earlier, which I think we'll continue to work on and develop a policy around. And then we were there for the strengthening board and superintendent communications with Dr. Maleko, Trustee Petlicov, Mike Asseli was there as well. And, you know, our board briefs, I think, were kind of, our Thursday board briefs were a highlight, you know? People saying how to do that. Yeah, most asked about, how do we do that? You know, you know, what's, what's the purpose there? And I found that, again, as a newer board member, seeing other board members questioning, well, how do, you know, we don't know this, or we don't know that. And I was, I get board briefs on Thursdays, and this is how we do it, you know? So I think it was great for Dr. Maleko to kind of come out and explain how we got there, and how it was a benefit for the board.
Yeah, so there was a lot of networking, talking with other fellow trustees from other districts. One interesting thing that I was interested about was the cellphone policy in Northville school district was in the press, talking about a total ban of cellphones. But it seems like it's only K through 8 where they have a total ban, but still students can keep it in their lockers. And I was like, this is the same that we do have in Dearborn, so I don't know what ban you're talking about. So, but anyway, it was, it was very insightful to hear from, from other school boards. And then, as Trustee Bazey mentioned, I attended the Dearborn's presentation, which was done very well by Dr. Maleko, Trustee Petlicov, and Mr. Asseli. And then I also, you know, during those network times, asked about other districts, what they're doing about their superintendent search, and some are in the middle of that process, and some are toward the end, and some have just seated their superintendent. Questions also on the late start and early to release, and seems like that is kind of a mixed bag. Some districts are doing the same thing that we're doing with early release, but majority of them are still doing late start on certain days of the week. I believe that was it. Any questions?
No, but I, I will remind you that, and you brought it up. We have talked over the years about a code of conduct, and I have shared it with the past policy committees of what other districts have used in theirs. So I do have information for that, to move that forward again, and have that conversation. I've always felt that it was something we needed to address, but it's kind of because there were so many bylaws and policies that needed to be updated, it kind of got lost every time. So maybe we'll be ready again to make that effort going forward.
Totally agree. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody was easier on YouTube than anybody else who gets up at the podium.
Next item, please.
But no one clapped for you, so.
Go ahead.
Citizen Participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. We have one yellow card tonight from Tracy Davis from Henry Ford College, and she just wants to make it known to, while we're in our search, to complete the online survey and to attend a listening session on 12/11/08. Is that correct, Tracy?
For the Henry Ford College president's search.
Search.
Yeah, make sure they know, this isn't for the superintendent's search, this is for the Henry Ford College.
This is for the Henry Ford College president's search. Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Agenda items for action. Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Secretary comments. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the interim superintendent wishes to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Any agenda items that you would like to be singled out? Okay. Seeing none, we can read the recommended action.
Motions to be approved action items. At this time, the secretary will call for a single motion to approve all the action items on this agenda, with the exception of any items which have just been excluded from this motion by the board member requested. Recommended action, move that action items numbered, sorry, 1 through 13, be approved as recommended in this agenda, if necessary, with the exception of, blank, none.
So moved. Moved by Trustee Petlicov. Support.
Support.
Okay. Support by Trustee Al Jami. Any questions on those agenda items?
Yeah, I do.
Trustee Al Jami.
So, and item number seven, which talks about change in security, and I just have one question. Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
So it does, the security set is specifically for Michael Berry Career Center, Henry Ford College, and Hype Athletic Campus, and other location. I'm trying to see what kind of security we have for Hype Athletics, since we're, and what other location, and does that security, is that the same security that we have at the high schools, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So we currently have security at our three high schools, which are Dearborn High, Fortson, and Ensel Ford. We have security at the Michael Berry Career Center. We have a security guard at the Hype Athletics complex, because we have a special ed program that has run out of there during the day, and because they accept public inside of their buildings, we felt it would be more secure to have a security guard in the area that we occupy in that building. Also, this year, we added security for Henry Ford Early College, and.
Because there was a separate building?
At Henry Ford?
Yeah, Henry.
Well, because now, at Henry Ford Early College, we were part of the campus previously.
Right.
So now, because we own the building, and it's our building, we secure it.
And at the, not, not to interrupt, but I just want clarification for what you, what you asked about at Hype Athletics. When you said it's, they, they are instructed, they are not to interfere with any other part of Hype Athletics.
Absolutely.
And only for our students.
They're there solely for our operation, our needs.
Just a follow-up on, on the high school level, because this is the right timing. Do we have enough security at the high school levels? I guess that's a, that's a starting question, because there is times where, in some cases, kids are skipping and doing things. Do we have enough security to make sure our kids, when they go to the school, that they're at the school? And they're not leaving the school without proper permission, without going to the office, just to prevent any risk to the kids? And also, the parents are entrusting us to, to have the kids in our school. So since we're renewing the contract track, do we have the necessary security at the high school level?
Yes, we do. Could we use more? We could always use more, but that's spending a lot of money on trying to keep kids in the building. So from a, from a security level, I will tell you, we're not always worried about who's leaving the building. We're more concerned with who's coming into the building. So as long as we have enough team in our operation, enough team members in our operation to make sure that our doors are secured, and that we're making sure above all else that nobody can just walk into the building, it's really not a security officer's job to stop a kid from skipping. Like, they are not, yes, of course, they can ask, where are you going? You're not supposed to be here, please come back in, you know? But at the end of the day, that's not their main focus. Their main focus is securing the door, securing the doors, the exterior doors, to make sure and watch for anybody who shouldn't be entering the building, if that makes any sense. But yes, we do have enough guards in our buildings.
Well, it's in line, and, and I agree with you, the security should prevent people from coming in and doing any harm to our kids, but also, we have to make sure that our kids are in attendance. So in the past, I thought, you know, kids staying within the school system and being able to go to the main office to be able, before they leave, is the proper, proper protocol. So it's in line in that, you know, the security is not meant to prevent people from going out, so they could go out whenever they want.
Not that they can, they shouldn't, right? But the priority of security, security is to watch over who's coming in primarily. I'm not saying that, no, they can't do that, they wouldn't challenge a student. No, of course they would, yes. But the primary, the primary job of security is to make sure that nobody who's trying to enter the building is a person who shouldn't be. Now, with that being said, we're hiring this security company mid-year, we're taking over the numbers that we started with into the new position. We could survey at the end of the year to see if we feel that there's any shortfalls or gaps, and reassess that over the summer, before we come back for the following year.
Now, and I think it was something that I was going to bring up in the future, and I have some future meeting on, on security and making sure our kids are safe. And I understand you're doing an amazing job with regard to safety and prevention of somebody going in, but I also want to make sure that when parents trust their kids to go to a school, that they are at the school unless they go through the proper channel to leave the school.
I totally agree. I also think what would help with that, too, is building that relationship with the parents and working them to have those conversations with their kids about leaving the building, and consequences, not only at the school, but consequences at the home for when their kids leave the building without permission.
Well, not to be a devil's advocate, a lot of times, they don't know they left.
I know, I know.
They don't know, and, and this is where the school would contact them and make them aware, because what I don't know, I don't know.
Absolutely. And we're always open to working with our parents and providing a better place for our students. There's always room for improvement.
Appreciate it.
Of course.
And just for context, we're always letting know parents whenever a student leaves or is absent for a class.
Yes, they always get notified.
An automatic call goes.
Right.
Maybe we need to increase that to some kind of email or text.
They do, but our, our kids are smart.
I know.
Our kids are smart.
They've been blocking numbers.
They're using their parents' cellphones to block the school number, you know? Our, our kids are smart. Oh, yes, though. But definitely, we want to work with everybody. Any other questions?
Trustee Bazey?
So a question on the communication. I know with Parent Square and some of those updates, if something like that were to happen now, I think there's multi-form almost instantaneously where that could communicate to the parents, right?
That they don't show up?
They, they don't show up, or.
That they had an absence?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it does.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
I've had one.
At some point, okay.
So when they take attendance during the day, I would assume, right, David? There are certain times during the day where the system is updated, and then the phone call is made.
I've seen that, the text message and phone call.
Yep, preventing skipping and absenteeism is definitely a board goal that we do have, and that we're expecting all of the staff members to contribute to that effort of mitigating that problem. Thank you, Trustee Al Jami, for raising that shoe. Any other questions, any other items? If none, can we have a roll call to approve the motion?
Jamal Ajami?
Yes.
Ollie K. Bazey?
Yes.
Patrick D'Ambrosio? Yes. Mary Petlicov?
Yes.
Nassar Zo?
Yes.
Ammar Zar, not here. President Moszib.
Yes, thank you. Uh, next item, please. Our summary of agenda, approved agenda items. So if you want to read one through.
On agenda items for action?
No.
No. Summary of the agenda items on the last page.
Approval warrants per board report 2570. Approval and award to Burlington English Incorporated. An approval of an award to Kami. Approval and award to Circulum Associated per board 2571. Approval of an award to Educator Preparation Programs, P E P P S. Approval and award to Interior Environment. An approval of an award to JAG Security Company per board report 2572. An approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P 12. Approval of financial statement and approval of donations.
Thank you. Next item, please. Under Board of Education Business. We don't have any discussion items.
Uh, let's see here. Board of Educational Business. Well, um, let me step back one to discussions. Want to make a note that between the city of Dearborn and the school district, we're in the process of a sale of a piece of property that the Smokehouse sits on, on Outer Drive. So I just wanted everybody to know that that is in transition right now to be done.
Thank you for that. So we can go to the
Board of Education Business. Acknowledgement of correspondence.
Okay, so over the past month, received multiple emails. There were a lot of emails specific to the recent approved health education standards that were passed by the State Board of Education. And this board has released a statement on that topic and I have responded to the folks who were inquiring about this topic. And our press release reads that the Michigan Education Department approved updates to the state's health education standards guidelines on November 13th. This marks the first revision since 2007, proceeding to the rise of major current physical and mental health issues such as vaping, cyberbullying, and social media. The updated standards are designed to equip students with information on topics, including maintaining a healthy lifestyle, promoting physical and mental well-being, and addressing the dangers of substance abuse. The area that generated the most discussion was the sex education portion of the curriculum, traditionally taught in grades five, seven, and nine. It is crucial to note that the recent approved state health education standards are recommendations. They're not requirements. Local school districts, including Dearborn Public Schools, maintain full control over the content of their health and sex education curriculum. Furthermore, current Michigan law guarantees the parents the right to opt out of their children out of sex education without penalty. While students must compete a health course to graduate, they cannot be penalized for opting out of the sex education component. The, we do have a process. In the fall of 2022, the district reconvened the Sex Education Advisory Board to review the existing curriculum and recommend changes to the Board of Education. In 2023, the committee voted to continue using the current materials for the next two years, covering the 2025, 26, and 2026, 27 school years. The final report for that committee is available online. The district is committed to utilizing the same thoughtful and transparent legally required process for the next curriculum, review, and any subsequent updates. By state law and good practice, district parents can opt out to have their children excluded from sex education. Teachers share the opt-out form with parents before covering the material in fifth and seventh and ninth grade. That was the end of the press release. We also received correspondence from the city, and this is regarding the Henry Ford College Presidential Search Committee. The letter was addressed to me and I shared it to all of you, asking to be represented in the Presidential Search Committee. They've contacted trustee D'Ambrosio at first and then chair of that committee, trustee Al Jami, talked to me about it and I asked that we need something formal from the city to address us on this issue. Now, I would have hoped that they could have utilized the period of time to fill out the form that we had for stakeholders to fill out, so they could have some kind of representation on that committee, but that did not happen. And that is something that we need to kind of improve on between, as far as the communication between the city and the school district. So the city is requesting Ms. Hussein Hash, I'm sorry, Ms. Zainab A. Hussein to serve as the city's representative. And they said her participation will help maintain the strong alignment between our institutions as this significant transition moves forward. So I'll entertain a motion if we want to include Ms. Hussein into that committee, making it a committee of 25 instead of the current number 24.
I move that we place Zainab Hussein as a representative for the city of Dearborn on our recent search committee.
Is there a support for that?
I'll second it.
Support by trustee D'Ambrosio. Any discussion?
The only discussion I want to say is following the process and for those of us that advocate that we have to follow the Open Meeting Act and to follow the bylaw is we have to stress that, you know, the reason we're doing it this way is because that's the right process. So I ask everyone that, you know, when they see something like this, they remind us to follow the process. This is not one of those where we could have, after we approved the 24 people, we could have just added without bringing it to the board, without going to form a process. It's really our formality, our process, and if we do anything to, I just don't want us to start a precedence of doing things without following our process. So I have no problem with this, but let's do it the right way in the future.
Absolutely. Okay, roll call, please.
Jamal Ajami?
Yes.
Ollie K. Bezzie?
Yes.
Patrick D'Ambrosio, yes. Mary Petlicov?
Yes.
Nazar Zo?
Yes.
Amazhar? President Mosel?
Yes, thank you. All right, I will be communicating with Ms. Hussein to let her know that the first meeting is tomorrow sometime.
And I just want to add something. My comment on following the processes to the board
Yes.
is when something like this happened and there is a request of anything of such, we have to follow the bylaws and the Open Meeting Act. And, you know, I'm always reminded of doing it, so let's do it for everything.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee Al Jami. Next item, if there is any other correspondence? All right, next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports. We had a financial meeting tonight and basically it was to discuss the RFP search for the new superintendent of Dearborn Public Schools. And the conclusion and the recommendation is there were five people that participated in the bid.
Yeah.
And our recommendation was the Michigan Leadership Institute was the firm that we chose. So we need a recommendation.
We need a motion to approve them.
To go forward.
Sure.
Just if I could add to it.
Sure.
So one of the thing that we asked for when we chose the Michigan Leadership Institute, that a part of the requirement is it would be a national search. It would not be limited to the state of Michigan. That is one of the requirement that we want. We want to get the best candidate possible, whether it's from the state of Michigan or from elsewhere. And the recommendation for Michigan Leadership Institute is pendant reference check. So, you know, this is a little different. We chose them based on the RFP, but there's no reference contact and such. So this is contingent on the reference being acceptable.
Okay, so let's make that motion and then we can have that discussion.
One other thing.
Yeah.
So the base bid is 20,050 and that would be plus reimbursement expenses.
Yes. Of travel expenses, yeah. Okay, let's have a motion first and then we can also have further discussions if there needs to be. So a motion to award Michigan Education Institute. I'm alive. Michigan Leadership Institute. Thank you for that. And the amount of initial, what was the amount?
20,500.
20,000?
500.
500. Plus the national search charge, I think it's a
Yeah, that was the next
Additional 2,000. So I'll entertain that motion.
Oh, sorry, clarification. Can we leave it as a general reimbursable expenses as they had multiple expenses listed just in case we needed to add travel and/or other additional services?
We can do that, it's fine.
Sorry for
That's a good one.
So let's have somebody move it and somebody else support it.
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by trustee D'Ambrosio?
I'll support it.
Supported by trustee Al Jami. Any further discussion?
Mr. President? So one of the questions that was brought up is will we form a search committee like we did at the college?
I believe we do the, from the training that we had with M A S B, is we do it as a full board.
Yes, we do it as a board. We've never had it.
So we don't have it as a separate committee. We just do it as the full board, so.
Thank you.
Any other question?
And just to give you some reference, Michigan Leadership Institute was the firm that we used when we hired and did a hiring Glenn Malako. And they also stayed on, Mike Wilmot was the one who was running the search then. They've been around for years. They're very experienced. They've had a lot, lot of exposure to Michigan institutions. They also helped us because immediately following the hiring of Glenn, Amy Blackburn had to resign from the board because she had moved out of the area and they also helped us with the appointment process as a kind of a little extra
Facilitator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were a facilitator. So we have worked with them in the past.
Yeah, I think for us, the biggest concern was they seem to be very strong Michigan-wise. We want to make sure that, obviously, we're selfish in the sense of we want the best for our district.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that the search does not, is not limited to Michigan. And they seem to be capable of doing that and we want to make sure that we set the expectation so that they're able to do that. I think also we want to make sure that everyone, and this is outside of Michigan Leadership, that everyone in our community know that the position is open for anyone. There's not been any predetermination. There's, it's going to be an objective search. It's going to be a fair search and we want to make sure that the best person get it.
Absolutely agree. Okay, any other discussion? Trustee Bezzie?
Just a quick question and maybe for Tom. So I make sure with Michigan Leadership, I know there was a document that we needed clarification on, we're good with everything that was submitted with them.
Correct. They actually sent that document Around 4:30 today. It should be in your email.
Okay.
So it was a clerical error that they did fix and put it in writing process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
We need a roll.
Yeah, let's have a vote. Roll call for the motion to approve it pursuant.
Jamal Ajami?
Yes.
Ollie K. Bezzie?
Yes.
Patrick D'Ambrosio, yes. Mary Petlicov?
Yes.
Nazar Zo?
Yes.
Amazhar, not here. President Mosel?
Yes, thank you. Continue, did you have anything else that was discussed at the Finance Committee, trustee D'Ambrosio?
No, we did not.
Okay. Policy Committee, Matt, prior to this meeting as well, I sat in place of the policy chair for that, trustee Zar, and we discussed Title IX as a separate policy, possibly coming to discussion in January and voting on it in February. And we had another firm, not Niolas, what was the firm? Ms. Ali Bezzie?
Miller Johnson.
Miller Johnson as the author of, for that policy. So the Policy Committee will review that and present it to the board in January. There will, there was also an extensive discussion on possible AI policy as well. That's all I had for policy. Any, any other committees that Matt, I don't recall? Okay, next item, please.
Board Member, interim superintendent, commentary.
So just one piece, a reminder, we have the Bus Patrol Press Conference coming on December 15 at noon. And for our stakeholders who are listening, this is an AI-enabled stop-arm camera school bus safety program that allows our community partners to make roads safer at no cost. I want to remind everybody that this is a partnership that was initiated by Dearborn Schools with Bus Patrol and Wayne County. And this technology will also allow our administrative teams to efficiently problem-solve using this new system of cameras on the bus.
And that system will go live at the beginning of the year?
January 1st, although we have students January 4th or 3rd.
Yeah. And there will be an informational campaign about this
First in the state, right?
From communications as far as how this is going to work. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Shor. Any other commentary?
Yes.
Trustee Al Jami?
This is more of a request. Given that the year is ending and we had some initiatives that we we requested mid-year, beginning of the year, and so on, I would love for the next meeting to get some updates on some of those items that we talked about, just to see if they're working. For example, I know Bob, Addy, we asked for a network assessment and I would love for an update or a presentation to say how things are going and what we end up doing. We also had a request to handle facilities request. There was a challenge with facilities having issues and, you know, sometimes slipping through the cracks and the system was implemented. Great job on that, but we, you know, I would like to ask that we get an update, how things are going with that. Also, I know we're doing a great job on the SIP and the dashboard and I was going to talk about it today, but no need because I know Ms. Federich is doing a great job in the meeting, but just to see, based on the goals, I know there was goals requested from the different schools probably last week or this week, so last week or this week. So maybe the timing is not the best to request any updates right now, but at the beginning of the year or the next meeting to see, did we get of the year or the next meeting, to see, did we get all the goals, where are things going, are we on the right track? Because at the end of the day, for that particular committee is accountability. So, those are the things that I would love more updates. It's kinda like to start the year off on things that we worked on throughout the whole year and see how things are going, are we making progress? I know the dashboard is an amazing job, and we just need to showcase it, you know, for our parents and for our city public to see there's transparency, we're not hiding anything, and we're working to make sure that everything is visible. I do wanna thank Rosa Dewey, I requested some ELO information and still looking at that, just received it, so I wanna thank Ms. Shur and Ms. Aldewey for providing the ELO information, so appreciate that, thank you.
Any other commentary? Yep, Trustee D'Ambrosio?
I'd just like to thank the community over the weekend for Goodfellows, no child goes without. The community gave us great support this year, and again, I wanna thank everybody in the community for supporting the Goodfellows.
And this is the last meeting before our holidays break, so wishing all of our Dearborn families happy holidays, and that you stay warm during this weather, and maybe, maybe there might be snow days coming through, so, but I won't say. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, December 15.
What we did before that, request for information, are we covered without any other requests besides the ones that Trustee Al-Jahmi had to ask for? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Oh, I did have one, I just remembered, and it's kinda timely, we're talking about the bus patrols. I, with the electric buses especially, somebody asked me a question about, because of the placement of the batteries in the middle of the bus, have we ever done a practice evacuation of those types of, and did Danielle leave already?
She's there.
Oh, okay. Has there ever been a, Mark, a practice drill with evacuating that type of a bus especially? So that, it doesn't, I don't want it to be with students, but, you know, individuals onboard that the bus drivers could see how it should work and what could be problems with that kind of a scenario of something happening in those kinds of situations?
It's actually a requirement that is done annually.
Okay.
It does involve students, students. The bus actually stops, all the students evacuate, they basically go off of the bus, and then they get back on, for every single bus.
Okay, have we done it with the electric buses?
Yes.
Is it, okay, so we have done it. Is it a little differently handled because of the placement, if the battery were to catch on fire?
No, the batteries don't cause any, it's the door placement. So, if you don't have a door out the back, there's a window out the back, but we wouldn't use that during a practice.
Right.
The door is out the side, and one is required, we take a step further, we do three a year with our buses, typically at the beginning of the year, right after this upcoming break, and then in the springtime.
Okay, well, that answers a question, then, we don't need anything else. Thank you.
Trustee Al-Jahmi?
One thing, I wanna recognize Tracy Davis, who's here from the college, who's helping us with the search for the Vice President. She's doing an amazing job, and she's here to make sure we complete some documentation. She went out of her way, so I wanna thank her and tell her that she's doing a great job.
Definitely, thank you, Ms. Davis. All right. Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, December 15, 2025, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administration Service and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom, Monday, January 12, 2026, P-12 Organizational Meeting, 6:45 PM, at the Administration Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom, Monday, January 12, 2026, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administration Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom, and Tuesday, January 20, 2026, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administration Service and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you, have a great night, everybody. This meeting is adjourned, 9:07.